Okay.
Live, so you know, even though you can't see anything on the monitor, it is going out live to the people that are watching. With that, then we're gonna call meeting order and have a roll call.
Kessler?
Here.
Kanega?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Ewert?
Here.
Binner?
Here.
Harton?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Thanks, invitation is given by Pastor John Meadows. He's not here, so the Capitol Guard will do that for us.
Father, we thank you for this time to get together and do city business that you've all endeavored to do for us. Father, we pray that you be with us and make the right decisions and pray that you be with everybody in the city, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks, religion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that, we're gonna start with a special order of business, a release of current promotions. Chief, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we have a promotion before you. Master police officer, the rank position between police officer and police sergeant. Officers are eligible to test for master police officer after four years of experience as a law enforcement officer. Tonight, we have an officer for promotion to the rank of master police officer, so I have Officer Matt Nelson. I'll step up here. Matt Nelson began his career in law enforcement in August of 2010 with the Wellington Police Department of Wellington, Kansas. He served Wellington for six years, three years as a patrol officer and three years as a patrol sergeant. He began working for the city of Hayesville in August 2016. While working in Wellington, Officer Nelson was on the Southern Kansas SWAT team and he was also the department's defensive tactics instructor. He has training in narcotics investigation, criminal interdiction, along with leadership and supervisory training. He grew up in Fredonia, Kansas, where he met his wife Amanda in high school. They now have four young boys, Colton, Jackson, Landon, and Nolan, and he's currently assigned to patrol section on the night shift. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Give a speech if you want.
No, I'm good.
Congratulations. We appreciate you being an officer for the city.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
They've got four boys, you need to get her a badge.
Okay, we'll move on to item B, then. Public hearing for anticipation approval of the proposed 2018 budget. With that, we need to have a motion to open the public hearing. Anybody? Mr. Kessler?
I'd like a motion when you open the public hearing.
Second.
Most second to open public hearing. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That the public hearing is now open and usually the script we usually do, do you remember the audience which to speak for or against the proposed budget? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one from the audience wanting to speak, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Kessler?
I'd like a motion when you close the public hearing.
Second.
Close second to close public hearing. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
With that, I would ask for any discussion from council. Mr. Crum?
I don't have any real discussion. I was gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the 2018 budget as presented, just so everybody knows, we're actually lowering the mill levy a little bit. The city's in a great financial situation and we've increased in value, so even with lowering the mill levy just a little bit, we were still able to give a raise to some of our employees and we raised the base pay for a large number of our positions that have been underpaid in the past. And I think the city's kinda right where we wanna be on our budgets like this. It's nice to be able to lower it a little bit and still be able to give incentives to our employees.
Second.
Most second to approve the budget as presented. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We want item one, citizens to be heard. We have nothing on the agenda at this point. To move to item two, quote license and bond, we have none. Item three, introduction of ordinance and resolutions, A, an ordinance annexing and incorporating certain land within the boundary of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Mr. Crum?
This is the one that we already did. This is just, it's coming back to us from the county, right? We already approved it, the county's approved it now, so...
We approved the city of the county and the county approved it, so now we can go forward.
Okay, I'll go and make a motion that we approve an ordinance annexing and incorporating certain land within the boundaries of the city and limits of Hayesville as presented.
Second.
Most second to approve the annexation as presented. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We want item B, is resolution waiving the gap requirements of KSAS 75 Phase 1-120A sub A for the Hayesville, the city of Hayesville, Kansas. If you remember when the officers were here, you brought this up, knowing that we have to do this every year since we do not do our accounting to gap. Ms. Harton?
I make a motion when we approve the resolution waiving the gap requirement of KSAS 75-1128 for the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
Second. Most second to approve the resolution waiving the gap requirement. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We want item C, is resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Hayesville, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings for spot line improvements, phase one, country lakes addition, and country lakes second addition, according to our handout on our desk. With the changes of the percentages. Got a motion, second, to approve the resolution on the water line, A, one and two, as changed. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We want item C, is resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Hayesville, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings. This is the water supply line, improvements Phase One, Country Lakes Edition and Country Lakes Second Edition. This is one that in your packet was sent to you as incorrect. The correct one was given to you at the bench, has to do with the breakout of the payment for this. It should have read seventy-one percent by the developer and twenty-one percent by the city.
Seventy-nine, twenty-one.
Seventy-nine, twenty-one is the way it should have read, so if you approve it, we're gonna make sure that we have that change in the resolution. Mr. Kessler?
I'd make a motion when we approve the resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements in the city of Hayesville, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings for spot line improvements, Phase One, Country Lakes Edition, and Country Lakes Second Edition, according to our handout on our desk.
Second.
Yeah, with the changes of the percentages.
Got a motion, second, to approve the resolution on the water line, A, one and two, as changed. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
I am D, is resolution on Country Lakes as presented, except this is the water distribution line, Phase One and Two, which is correct as a one-hundred percent for the developer, so there's no real change to that one. Ms. Crum?
I'll make a motion when we pass a resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements in the city of Hayesville, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings. This is water distribution line improvement, Phase One, Country Lakes Edition and Country Lakes Second Edition.
Second.
Most second to approve the distribution of Country Lakes Edition and Country Lakes Second Edition with the distribution of water line. Question, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We want item E, which is also a resolution on Country Lakes. This is the sanitary sewer improvement phase for Country Lakes Edition and Country Lakes Second. Mr. Kessler?
I'd make a motion when we approve the resolution as presented in our packet for Country Lakes for the sanitary sewer improvements.
Second.
Most second to approve the resolution on Country Lakes sanitary sewer. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
F is resolution for the paving and drainage improvements on Country Lakes Edition, second. Mr. Crum?
I'll make a motion when we pass a resolution for the paving and drainage improvements for Country Lakes. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We want item G, was the executive session for attorney-client privilege not to exceed ten minutes to include attorney, counsel, Will, McToney. And that should be all of us. Mr. Kessler?
I'd make a motion when we go into executive session for attorney-client privilege not to exceed ten minutes with counsel, Will, Tony, and Luttrell.
Second.
Most second to one new executive station as presented. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Call meeting back to order. There were no binding actions taken in the executive session. With that, then we're gonna move on to item H, is resolution approving a settlement agreement and mutual release between the city of Hayesville, Kansas, Excel Construction LLC and Haney Associates Architects Regarding the Hayesville Activities. Mr. Crum?
I'd make a motion when we approve as presented, the resolution approving the settlement agreement and mutual release between the city of Hayesville, Kansas, Excel Construction LLC and Haney and Associate Architects Regarding the Hayesville Activities.
Second.
Most second to approve the resolution as presented. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We want then item four, no communication, A, government body announcement. Mr. Crum?
Going on at the library this month, let's see, tomorrow, at 6:00 PM, there's a Medicare seminar that will be going on. I would highly recommend anybody that's on Medicare to try to make that, they'll be giving some information there. On the eighteenth, it's Friday night, FPS, which honestly, I don't know what FPS stands for, may I help you?
First-person shooter.
First-person shooter, okay. It's from 5:30 to eight. August 21st, from 12:00 to 1:30 PM, they're having an eclipse day special event, so they'll be giving away free solar shades, although I believe they may have ran out of those. But the event, they're gonna be doing some outside the library for that. And also, on the 21st, is their next movie night. They have their Reaple Mayhem on August 26th, and on the 31st, will be the library board meeting. So, that's from the library.
Thank you. Any other announcements, council? Seeing that, we'll go on to item V, is ticket of Kansas from the primary election. That's really your notice showing that they break down what the votes were. Item C is request please from KDHE regarding a public revitalization concerning groundwater accumulation efforts that will take place on August the 17th at the pool. Mr. Crum, question?
I am curious, I'm curious, I'm kinda concerned. I know some people in the area, is this the only notification they've got? Is the city not gonna notify the people in the area? Because there's a lot of people in that area.
It's KDHE's responsibility to do all notifications. From what I understand, everybody that I know have gotten the letter in the area of what your map is there.
Okay, I've heard from two or three people that didn't. Maybe they, maybe when I asked, it didn't occur to them that came in the mail, maybe they were thinking it was gonna be a door hanger.
No, it was truly mail.
Okay.
I'm in the area, I'm in the area and I got one.
Okay, and so, it probably got mailed out to the people that are in the county as well and everything.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I'll double check on those.
Yeah, and if you see, make sure that they really attend that August 17th meeting, so they can truly explain all of the, the way it actually will run and how it'll be done, it's a very important meeting. Item B, member of council regarding new business of the DBF upholstery and form systems. Ink and form systems is not new, but they must, they just have the new license, huh? Okay, they've been over there for quite a while. That will then move on to old business, item five, we have none. Item six, other business, hay consideration re-plied of the South Hampton Estates Edition. With this one, there's been some additional questions that have come up. I'd like council to table this. Mr. Kessler?
I'd make a motion when we table the business of the re-plied of the South Hampton Estates Edition.
Second.
Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We want item B, which is a vacation request, 2100 West 55th Street South. You can see from your minutes and the items that came through the planning commission recommending for the vacation request, and this is for the additional entrance and exit for the auditorium for the school. They needed to have an additional exit off of 55th Street or entrance both, so that they can truly drive all the way around from Meridian through 55th Street. So, planning commission has passed it, we just need to approve it. Is Ewert?
I'll make a motion that we approve the vacation request at 2100 West 55th Street South. Second.
Most second to approve the vacation request, 2100 West 55th Street South. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item C, I think that's where we are. Consideration agreement with PEC regarding the North Main design. Reason we've got this on now, and I think if, as you've seen the reins, North Main really is in bad shape as far as drainage for sure. To be able to get federal WAMPO funds, you have to have your total design ready to go. This was approved in the 2040 WAMPO, so they'll come up again for money to get approved. We wanna make sure that we are ready and it doesn't slow down, so that we can truly get Main Street redone. This'll be the only main thoroughfare that's not been done in just a short time, but it'll truly give us a lot of additional, the sidewalks and the drainage, as we know, you can already drag down the street, the small reins we've had over Main Streets. That's why we brought it in, to get this thing started in the length of time it takes for the design on Main. Mr. Crum?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of agreement with PECs regarding the North Main design.
Second.
Most second to approve the agreement PEC on North Main. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D, consideration request to purchase truck, Parks Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, I have four proposals for a 2018 truck to be utilized in the Parks Department. Our Parks Department trucks, we had one go down with a frame failure. We looked at all these and we did look at Ford Chevy and Dodge. Parks Department supervisor went out, checked every one of them out. The Dodge does come with some built-in toolboxes on the side, let alone it is also cheaper. So, we're asking, actually, the funds for this, we've had all the equipment reserve fund, utilizing some of the funds we received during the auction this summer. So, we're asking authorization to purchase the 2018 Dodge 1500 from Davis Moore Automotive for a total of $26,109.65.
Mr. Kessler?
I move that we approve the purchase of the truck for Parks from Davis Moore Dodge for $26,109.65. Second.
Most second to approve the purchase of the truck for Parks Department as presented. Discussion, questions?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item F, consideration request to purchase antique lights. This is, as you've seen in your memo, where they're new and we're going in, and these are truly already budgeted and have been near seventeen, track on proven.
So, attached along with the memo was site plans for each one of these areas. We obviously previously went from Sarah Lane to Clinton. We're looking at continuing that all the way to North Main for a total of nine lights. Also, over by the senior center, from the railroad going west to North Main there, take four lights, Randy Dorner Park Complex. We currently have ten already, but there's five more needed to complete that. And then also, since there is such a long lead time on fabrication and delivery, thought it was a great idea to have at least five lights on hand, because they seem to be targets for vehicles in the area, so...
People like...
Yes. These costs also do include material needed for installation, it's not just the cost for the antique lights really well. So, if you answer any questions, if not, I'm asking authorization to order the needed materials for a total price not to exceed $47,430.65.
Mr. Crum?
Okay. Adding to our lights, which is great for the city, I'm curious, is there only one company that makes these? Have we looked to see if there's anybody else that has them cheaper?
We have, and we actually kinda moved to a different, we have the same manufacturer, but we have a different vendor that we use to order them. If you remember the last time we had these to you, we kinda went through the design of them, because we had some issues with them and redesigned them to save us some maintenance costs, and this manufacturer's worked with us really, really well to take care of some issues we've had for a long time.
So, the manufacturer's working with us and we're checking with different vendors off and on to make sure...
Yeah, I mean, the vendor we currently have was actually the one that let us push the manufacturer of the LED bulb to have a lot of them covered under warranty. Okay.
Mr. Kessler?
What are the other areas that we're still looking to put these in, besides the long Meridian, round bike path?
We're still getting Meridian, I think is the only other area that we won't have at this point, and North Main.
These areas here, we have power to them, so they shouldn't take much more than what Meridian, Meridian needs power from west to actually run the lights. These are just much more capable to put in, walk quicker.
And North Main right now is lighted raw enough with the overhead lights that we were old enough to see if we can get additional funds for running the additional sidewalk toward six to third. Mr. Crum?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid on the antique lights and hardware and things to go with it for a total of $47,430.65.
Second.
Most second to approve a memo for purchasing of the antique lights. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid on the antique lights and hardware and things to go with it for a total of $47,430.65.
Second.
Motion second to approve a memo for purchasing of the antique lights. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item G, consideration proposal for the Riggs Park improvements?
At last week's park board meeting on August 7th, the committee voted to spend $25,000 to remodel the main playground. Attached in your packet is a site plan of the playground. The existing metal slide swing in the little jungle gym were removed today in preparation. They're not up to code anymore, so they're not safe. Do this for Georgia, but they're looking at doing a new toddler age system in the area for two to five-year-olds. Have a new swing. Teeter-tarters are staying and the tire swingers are staying. And the site plan has a picture of the slide and also the playground structure. We are utilizing the same two gentlemen who have installed Whistle Park Playground. It's worked out really well. That's about it. So before your approval, I'd like to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Baker?
Make a motion we approve to spend $25,000, $25,000 for the equipment as presented in our packet.
Second.
Motion second to approve the Riggs Park improvements as presented. Discussion?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Yes. In that area, are we going to have to do anything with the base, rubber? Is the base already set?
The teeter-tarter, we're leaving the drainage of the teeter-tarter because we put that in about 2009, 2010. The rest of the playground, we'll be installing normal drains. We've done with all our new playground equipment, also doing a three-foot border, concrete border around it.
The base on it will be?
Rock and all that stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Should it be mulched? It will be on top of it.
Okay.
Very good. With that, we will move on to. Move on to item A, consideration of the special events. And with that, we have to have a public hearing for the waiver of the distance requirement as we have always in the past because of the way our application form is set up. So with that, we will read from our public hearing script and get a motion to approve the public hearing open. Mr. Baker?
Make a motion we open the public hearing for the waiver of distance requirements.
Second.
Motion second to open the public hearing for waiver of distance requirements. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item B. The public hearing is now open. Have any council had any outside contact regarding this matter? If so, please, as no one spoken to in the nature of the conversation, what items from the conversation might affect your decision? Seeing none, the members of the council have a conflict of interest in this matter? If so, please disqualify yourself in further action. And the city council for this case, you may speak as a member of the public. Seeing none, has the city received any written or electronic communications on this matter? No? And now, anyone would like to speak from the public? You have five minutes to present the information. If I may be extended, please state your name and address. Seeing no one? The public comment is now closed. For council action, the floor is open to council members' comments. Seeing none, I need a motion then to close the public hearing. Mr. and Ms. Parton?
I make a motion we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Discussion?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
With that then, I need a motion to waive the distance requirements for the special event. Motion second to waive the distance requirements for special event. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item B, consideration approval of temporary special event permit application. We got one there from the Kansas High School 1967 class reunion that will be held over in the hack showing the outside boundaries of the middle room from 5 till 11 o'clock, which I think is theirs.
I can't really see the room that well on the inner packet. Is that the?
That's the railroad.
The whole thing at the bottom?
Yeah, just the railroad itself.
Oh, the railroad.
That's actually one room split in two?
Uh-huh. And it's actually just in case they needed to, the room where you can walk through, though it's actually the whole room basically. Who wants to approve?
I make a motion we approve the special permit for the class of 1967.
Second.
Motion second to approve the temporary special event permit application. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
With that, we will then move on to item I. I know you wanted to talk, for sure didn't you?
Thank you.
Item I recommended the common consumption area. This staff was asked to bring back some recommendations, so up to them.
As you can see in the memo, we had five different locations suggested. First two are pretty simple and basic, just the inside of the buildings there, the Senior Center and the Lions Club Shelter. Then we've got on there the band shelter. And from that point on, you can see that we've also included maps in the packet for viewing kind of what we were thinking of. The band shelter is basically the, in Riggs Park, the kind of raised area where you can tell if you're out there in the park on the east side there, drops off towards the creek. Same thing on the south side, it drops off and heads down in that lower area that's more of a drainage area when you've got water running through there. And then not quite over to the road on the west-hand side. The library and historic we've got there, we've got two different options. The first one shows all the historic area, the traditional, what we consider the historic area right now, bound on the north and west by South Main, bound on the east by Hayes and bound on the south by Second Street. And also has the library building as a standalone. But we've got the first map showing the connection there in between, basically in between the driveways of the parking lots to the library. So if you have this common consumption area, you'd have to close down any of the roads that are considered within it. So that's why we had that just closed down in between the driveways to the parking lots and library. We've got those two versions of the historic district and library to look at. And then over on, near the new activity center and pool, first map in there shows kind of an area which allows to have events. So it'd be both in and on Sarah Lane and up to the sidewalk on the north of Sarah Lane there and then all the way down around where the volleyball courts are and in the parking lot of the activity center and to the south of the pool. Then you can see the second map, which is in that area, and it shows a more limited area just in the parking lot of the activity center and volleyball courts area and the area south of the pool. Both of those maps also do include the rental rooms, which we consider the rental room, the kitchenette and the little room in the north of that within the activity center. And we threw on the patio for some good discussion. So that's what we got.
Well, I'm not even going to talk about what the suggestions are. One thing I was reading when I went through and was looking at the House bill that passed again, I had a couple, I know when it, when it came to us on the House floor, the intent was not for cities to put entertainment districts in their parks. The intent was for areas like Old Town in Wichita and there was a two-block area in North Topeka that was looking at having an art walk every Friday night and different things like that, areas that were easily cordoned off that you would only have adults near for the most part. I really don't think the intent was to have park areas designated to this. And as I was reading through more, also, I know we were talking about, because we may have more of these come to us and do we really want to do this at every council meeting? There is an annual cost for each one of these, it's $100. So we're looking at five areas, that would be $500. We'd have to pay the state and we'd have to do that annually, $100 for each area. I would just as soon save the city $100 and take each individual thing like we have been. As far as the recommendation, the areas are much larger than I would be comfortable with. The area that we have, the beer garden outside the band shell, I think is plenty big enough. I don't think there's any reason why in the biggest or most popular park in the city we would want that big of an area to allow drinking when you could have kids playing on equipment basically right across the six-foot path. I just don't think that's, I don't necessarily like that. I could probably get along with the historic district the way it's written as long as anything that was going on wasn't going on while the library was open because that, there's no playground equipment there. I think that would be more easily cordoned off. I'm kind of the same way on the Senior Center because it's all indoors. I think everybody knows what I feel about the patio at the hack. And over by the pool, again, I would not want to see that big of an area out in the open where you could have plenty of underage people playing volleyball or wanting to play volleyball. If we wanted to look at putting a small area in over there like a beer garden like we do over at Riggs Park now, I'd probably be more accepting of something like that for a particular thing. But in the bill that the House passed, I mean, it says you've got to have these areas cordoned off, you have to have them designated, and these are huge areas we would have to be cordoned off. And I just don't think that, I don't think I'm ready or the city's ready to have areas this large having activities out. And I would just as soon leave things the way they are, save us $100 bucks an area that we would have to renew every year anyway. Do beer gardens where we need to do beer gardens, but that's my opinion. That's all I have.
Mr. Baker?
Well, I don't have a problem with the $100 a deal. And the good thing about it being every year is that's something we can look at every year and see what's working and what's not working. But we'll just start with the Riggs Park. Good thing about the area that's shown there is that's where the people sit and stuff for the concerts. And this way, because right now, I'm just going to go off of experience, right now you've got couples with kids that, maybe there's two couples. The moms go in and have a beer and then come out and the dads go in and have a beer. This way, they can go, because they're going to drink in front of their kids anyway. It's fact of life. So I mean, I like that area there because of the fact that it would include concert goers. As far as the historic district, I have a problem with the entire library being enclosed in that. I think it should be just the rental rooms because I really don't think we want liquor all throughout the library. As far as the hack, I don't have a problem with it being on the patio because the way it's shown, that's the only place they can go if they rent the room is on the patio. I don't like it all the way around the north, yeah, the north side of the pool. I prefer the southern part. If we're going to have any type of gatherings or festivities in that area, then that would cover it. And I believe, looking at the bill, it shows you can do it with signage. It doesn't have to be completely cordoned off. So my question would be, is that something that the city would, would be that or whoever's putting on the event would have to provide the signage? Would be my question on that.
The areas that are shown in blue were a lot larger and a lot bigger scope than I guess I was expecting to see. I was, I was kind of imagining that we were probably going to define in some way the areas that we've already used for consumption areas, which are pretty much, they're all indoors, I guess, except for the Riggs Park area that we've had the beer garden in, if I recall right. And so this is swinging the gate open a lot wider than what I was expecting to see in one jump. One of the things that I would be, wonder about, if we, if we had much larger areas that were public consumption areas for something like a concert during Fall Festival or something such as that, if the areas were considerably larger, what kind of impact would that have on the police? Would you guys, would it be more difficult to watch that and make sure that people weren't taking beer or liquor out where they weren't supposed to be outside of the area? I don't think we, I wouldn't be in favor of making your job a lot more difficult. And it seems to me that the bigger these places are, that's just more real estate that we have to look at. It's a lot bigger jump than I was expecting to see.
Mr. Baker?
Well, I was looking at this and I'm kind of like everybody else. I'm like, wow, okay, where did we come up with all this blue? I personally, I like the, oh, the historic district. I guess I looked at that and I was like, wow, I'm not in favor of making that whole historic district a area to consume alcohol. I mean, I don't have a problem with the library if we do it in the rooms like we've been doing it in the past where it's contained in there. I do not go for the whole historic district. And as far as the hack, I think somebody touched on the fact of doing it down on the south end, maybe around the volleyball courts. I don't really, I have too much problem with that, but all the way up on the north and everything. I especially don't like the patio where it says rental rooms and stuff off of the hack. I re, I made the statement last time and I am not in favor of people out on the patio consuming alcohol right across the street from the apartment complex where there's a lot, and the nursing home where there's a lot of kids and, yeah, parents drink in front of their kids, but that don't mean we need to go out there and promote it. So that's just my two cents worth.
Kind of also, so council knows, you've already previously on by ordinance exempted the historic district.
Have we?
Historic district is right now exempted from the KSA, the alcohol laws at this point, allowing it to be there now. You've already exempted that. So you know that area is truly already there.
Okay.
Mr. Baker?
I guess one question I had, you have these areas, but whoever's putting on the event is still going to, all this deals with is having to have the distance waiver every time. Is that correct? I mean, they're still going to have to apply to have an event.
Yeah, in discussion with, in the resolution, the ordinance we have to draw, it would exempt it from the distance, right?
Okay.
So drawing it up just for the activity center rental room would say, and exempted for distance.
Okay.
It doesn't take your distance away if someone was to be selling it. You still have to approve for sale.
So if you have this big area, that doesn't necessarily mean that every time somebody does something, they're going to use that whole big area. They have to.
Still has to be approved. You still have to approve the regular application.
Yeah. I guess in the thing with the hack and the patio and the room and all that, it's like we are okay with drinking and we want to drink and everything, but we don't want anybody to see us. It doesn't, you know, we need to make up our minds whether we're going to do alcohol or not. That's my opinion. This hair splitting over things like this just doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Baker?
I was going to bring up the same thing as far as, all this will do is just waive the distance requirements. It does not automatically approve people's special event permit application. At least they'll have to do a drawing of whether they want the, their permit to take place, whether it's in one room or one area. It's not a free-for-all as far as drinking in this whole area. It's, they still have to narrow it down to wherever they want to have a special application or special event. And the second thing was, I don't know why the state needs $100 for each application every year.
Now you might open up a whole other can.
If we did one ordinance listing them all, then that's only one ordinance listing them all for $100, so.
Yeah, if we could do that.
If we possibly get by with one, $100.
That sounds better.
I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Drew?
The only problem I have is who's responsible for making sure that these people are all 21, drinking in all these areas? The vendor?
Like. Like anyone else, I guess, that they're, they're still responsible. The people doing the event are responsible. So if we get an event from the class of 1967 and they start serving minors, they've got a problem.
So it's just the vendor that?
Yeah.
Is responsible?
Whoever is asking for the permission to use that consumption area.
Okay. And my other question is, would be for Fall Festival. I know in the past, they have, you know, they have to show a band or something. Let's still be the same?
Yes.
The people that are drinking in there, we're going to make sure that they all have that band there?
Yes, they would have to get a band to get.
Even purchase the alcohol.
Okay.
That was my only concern.
Yeah, that won't change.
Mr. Baker?
Two things. In Section G, it does say the boundaries of any consumption area must be clearly marked, but then it says using a physical barrier or any apparent line of demarcation. So I think it would take more than just a sign. I think you'd actually have to have the area.
We could see a white spray paint.
Something like that. The other thing is, I don't really know how this is going to save us any time. We just did one. We had, we're going to have to approve the event layout anyway. And the, we always do that immediately after we do the motion on waiving the requirement. So I don't really know how much time this is really saving us. Because we have to approve the event, the event the way it's laid out anyway. This is, we're paying $100 a year to save one step. And again, I think we're expanding it a lot more than I'm comfortable with. I just don't know if it's worth the bother to do this.
And this all came up because of distance requirements is really what we got into. And to read the actual ordinances and state law, the distance requirements were set up for the sale, not for private parties having consumption. So, but because of the way our application is worded, it mentions the. So, but because of the way our application is worded, it, it mentions the state law, which is a, made us do the, um, distance requirement, uh, on, on our waivers. So that would be, if you do the consumption requirement, the, the regulation would actually waive this requirement in the resolution itself is what would happen. Um, so it's truly, uh, doesn't stop the resolution for anyone wanting to sell. If the Fall Festival is wanting to sell and they are within five hundred feet of the school or church, they, we still will have to go through, even though there is a consumption area there, because they are selling. Um, so we still would have to do it for Fall Festival. It would just allow people to leave their designated sale place, taking it out into the regular van shelters, what we're having at this point.
Mr. Kessler?
My original thought when I kept making an issue of, of the distance and waiving the distance requirement every time we did this, can we not make an ordinance changing the distance? Well, I mean, why do we have to have, go this route? In other words, if where we do this every year is a given distance from the school, change the distance in the ordinance. If it's a, if it's a good distance, it's a good distance. If it's a bad distance, change it.
Well, the, the problem with the activity center is that the church's property line and activity center is, they butt up against, butt up against each other. So it's not where the church is located, it's where the property line is.
Yeah.
So that's what causes the problem. I don't think you wanna do away with your distance requirements. If you get, say you get somebody that wants to build a liquor store right next to the school, um, now you don't have any distance requirements and they can build that liquor store right next to the school itself. And again, the, the, uh, ordinances talk about sale, not just consumption or private parties at that point. But I think to waive those and give up our ability to do waivers for sale out there.
Mr. Kessler?
Uh, when are the, um, notices sent out? That's just for the distance, uh, for the waiver of distance requirements, uh, to area people? In other words, you know?
We're not required to send out any notices.
Okay.
Mr. Kessler?
And again, these are just recommendations, so we don't need to do anything.
No, no, no. This is, this was, you asked the staff to bring you back and...
Right, and they did.
And, um, is that what the staff had anything they would like to add at this point, staff?
We're looking at potential events at the van shelter. We're looking at what, uh, potential wedding or things might go on in historic district or wine tastings or whatnot at the library fundraisers that they've had. And then for, uh, the new activity center, we've got some big, big ideas for events that could go on, which would go on either way, with or without alcohol, but it may be an enhancement in some people's opinion to come to the event and be able to do that in those areas.
Would you like staff, from what you've heard in discussion or recommendations, to come back with something a little different that may be a little tighter than what you see at this point?
Mr. Kessler?
I don't make an, I don't mind making a broad area, just because, you know, like we said, uh, they still have to come back with an application, uh, for approval and a designated area.
Mr. Kessler?
Uh, I guess I just assume just have them take it under advisement and think about it for the future, because I, again, I don't think this is something that we need to tackle right now. I don't think we need to spend a hundred dollars, because else we're doing a save in one step, and I don't really see the purpose in needing to save by one step.
What I would recommend at this point is we truly make sure we change our application procedure, so that between, and that two, one for sale and one for just consumption, so we don't get into having to do the distance requirement waiver every time someone wanting to, um, rent the hack's rental room. And again, the, the reason I know that they put on the, um, senior center is because the senior center had a wine tasting event that they did, and they used, put the library in, that the library had a wine tasting event. That's why both of those were put in, um, in the historic district, truly was with the weddings and that type of thing that are taking place in the, um, community room is the other reason that there, even though historic district, uh, has already, um, been waived basically, uh, through district.
Mr. Kessler?
Uh, is that something we really need to make a motion on, or is that just something that staff can just, is that just a...
Well, I mean, if you wanna kill the whole thing, you can.
Well, no, I mean, a te- I mean, is that not just a technical, is that something that we have to do from the bench, or can we just...
We can just redo the applications, one for consumption, one for sale.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, do, do we need to do that from the bench, or can we just...
We'll, we'll bring it to you guys in an item, makes a few later.
Okay.
For what my recommendation is at this point, we'll run through attorney and have them vote to making sure that, uh, because the application we have truly is outdated for what is happening with the rental rooms and other places in town.
May I make one statement, too?
With the changes in the cereal malt beverage laws that will take effect in another year
and a half or so, we're getting rid of three-two beer in the state of Kansas. And because of that, the kind of two-tier, uh, way that our current liquor laws work isn't gonna be the same after those laws change. And if you look at our liquor ordinances right now, we've got different requirements for three-two and for hard liquor in some instances, and in some they treat them the same. So just something to think about moving forward is, you know, making it so it's all gonna be applicable, you know, for this new regime that's gonna take place here in another year and a half.
Is that April of nineteen that takes place?
Yes.
Good discussion. Um, we'll, uh, probably have something come back to you. Uh, again, the main thing I'll probably come back to to start with is the, uh, application changes from there. We'll move on into item number seven, Department of Court, A, Eventary Services as well.
Interest Bank is hosting a teacher back-to-school breakfast on Wednesday, August sixteenth from seven to eight-thirty a.m. If you have any questions, contact Kyle Foreman with Interest Bank at three-eight-three-six-zero-three-one. The Chamber is having a ribbon cutting at the Body Wellness Center, seven-eleven East Grand, on Thursday, August twenty-fourth at eleven-thirty in the morning.
Hey, Kirk, Cam?
I have a...
Chief?
Hi, good evening, good morning, council. First thing I have is, uh, thanks to everybody that came out for National Night Out. Uh, we had a pretty good turnout. Uh, the weather was great. Uh, it wasn't too hot. It was nice and shady where we were over there with the pool. Everybody seemed to have a good time. Uh, we ran out of hot dogs, so everybody came hungry. It was a good thing. That was a good opportunity for people to come out, meet your police officers, meet your neighbors, uh, those kind of things. So it was good to see everybody, uh, come out and enjoy that evening, so hope to do it again next year. Uh, our visiting officer this evening is Officer Davidson, Glenn Davidson. He is in our investigation section, uh, assigned to day shift. You know, so say hi to him as you walk by out there. And one last thing that I have is, uh, we're gonna have an amnesty day for warrants in the city of Hazville. Um, it's gonna be Tuesday, August twenty-ninth from nine a.m. to three p.m. Um, now, what this does is allows defendants with outstanding warrants the opportunity to resolve the court obligations without hearing arrest and waiving the warrant fee of twenty-five dollars. Uh, warrant fees are only waived if defendants voluntarily appear to resolve the warrant. So if we have to go out and pick you up, then it doesn't happen. But if you come in on that day and talk to the court, then, uh, then they can try to help you out there. Um, if you're not sure if you have a warrant or not, um...
It happens.
Check anyway. I don't make this stuff up. If you're not sure if you have a warrant or not, uh, feel free to go to our website. Our website does have warrant lists on there, so you can see if your name is on there and make sure you're, uh, not being looked for right now by the Hazville Police Department. Um, so I would encourage anybody that does have outstanding warrant and they've been contemplating when to take care of it, this would be a good time to do it. Again, that's gonna be August twenty-ninth from nine a.m. to three p.m. Come to the Police and Courts Building. Um, and like I said, they'll be able to take care of it over there. If you have any questions, just call the court here in Hazville. So, thanks. Public Works, sir.
We had some nice visuals, but as you can see, our monitors aren't working, so...
I guess, but I don't show.
Voice screen was complete last Tuesday evening. Uh, that's open. Uh, also our volleyball pit, same volleyball pit next to the activity center, uh, the net is up, poles are placed, and the sand is down. Uh, the light should be in in about three weeks, and when they get here, we'll install those and get the canopies in. Um, also, starting tomorrow, Hillcrest and Alexander, uh, we're gonna be replacing the valley gutter and concrete apron on, uh, Hillcrest. Um, so that'll be closed, Alexander will be closed starting tomorrow until about Monday. Uh, hope for no rain. And after that, Monday, they will work on the asphalt, ripping it out and placing the concrete there on Hillcrest, so. Also, last, the Public Works staff is out and about, uh, street striping and crosswalk striping in preparation for school. Uh, they're concentrating on the crosswalks and, uh, the white color right now. Uh, once they complete that, they'll work, uh, one or two nights overnight, uh, doing some orange lines down North Main especially. Thank you.
And Georgie's not here, I don't think, and anything, I think we've covered, I think, everything that she has in there. Item eight appointments, A, Janie Humble, three fifty-six, Timber Creek, regarding appointment to Hazville Library Board, two-year term.
We'll make a mo- motion that, uh, we have you appoint Janie Humble, three fifty-six, East, East Timber Creek, uh, to an appointment to the Hazville Library Board for two-year term.
Second.
Oh, second, approve Janie Humble's appointment? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item B, LKM voting delegates. You have the ones that have been suggested, and, uh, Janie will be going to make her votes yea or nay, up and down, whatever way she decides she's gonna vote, I guess. So we would need approval of those. Mr. Parton?
I make a motion, we have you appoint the following voting delegates, Mayor Armstrong Will Black and Janie Cox, in alternates as Chief Lethfield, Georgie Carter, and Tony Martinez to the LKM.
Second.
Oh, second, to approve the LKM voting delegates presented? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on to item nine, offer justices and be heard. Anyone that would like to come forward and speak to the, uh, council, now is the time. Seeing no one rushing up there, we're gonna move on. Item ten, Execuitation, we have none here scheduled. Item eleven, Bill to pay, A bill to pay first half of August. Mr. Uhl?
I'd like to make a motion that we pay the first half of August bills. Second.
Oh, second, pay the first half of August bill. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item thirteen, Council items, A, Council Concerns.
Mr. Kessler?
If we were doing slurry seal, uh, I know we're supposed to notify the, the people on the street we're doing. Who notifies them? Does the company or does the city?
The contractor does. Uh, they usually put at least two notices out beforehand. Also, it's on our Hazville Public Works Facebook page. Um, and it's also at council meetings when they're here as well.
I know when they did Alexander, they failed to notify the cul-de-sacs. So the people that lived on Alexander knew that it was gonna happen, but the people that lived with the cul-de-sacs that have to get to Alexander weren't notified.
And one thing about Alexander was, one of the streets that we kept, uh, one lane of traffic open, especially the course, they're hard to just close off totally, so I'm not sure on the court itself, it was totally a hundred percent closed off, because they usually do them south, middle, east.
I heard some people had some trouble getting in and out, so I guess it just, we need to make sure that we let them know they need to, if the cul-de-sac has to use that street, they need to be notified as well. Um, and I know, I'll, I'll fill out some sheets on these, but I just noticed, um, Meridian and Grand, that corner of the, what, north, yeah, northwest corner, it looked like they're starting to mow it, but it's getting really, really high. And that's gonna be a busy corner, and that's a corner that we need to keep tabs on. And, uh, just north of Old Oak Estates, too, that big field just to the east of the Methodist Church, that's getting really tall. And I, I, I think we went, we've gone too long, they should have been notified a long time ago and it should have been notified. It's like twice as tall as it should be before they got notified, so. The big areas like that, I guess, I don't know if we just overlook it for whatever reason, but those two areas were kinda concerning to me this past weekend.
Well, on Grand, um, we always get back, we had it in court twice last year. Um, they always come back and say it's agricultural, and I don't know if there's agricultural growing over there now.
They got some weeds that are taller than the other, but that's what...
It's agriculture, the horses out there, or goats.
Anyway, that's the, uh, the excuse we usually get, they're agricultural, but yes, they're, I don't know what kind of crops they are, but anyway, yes, we'll follow through with those.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler?
Um, I just had one thing, I, the, uh, looking at our next thing on there, the action request forms, and there was one turned in for three fifty-four, Turkle, and, uh, I'm not gonna get off on a tangent and whine and cry because some of the council member went to my ward and turned this in, but this particular piece of property has been dealt with several times. Uh, I personally have written several complaints against this property. Uh, the people have called me and I've talked to Tony, I've talked to Randy when Randy was here. Uh, and I understand, we have family, we have relatives and stuff that live, and friends that live in different areas, but I, I, if it's in my ward, I would appreciate a notification. Uh, you know, that something's been turned in, because, I mean, basically, as far as I'm concerned, this was just a duplicate of something that was already in the works. So that's my two cents worth.
Mr. Kessler, did you have a, a council concern though?
Oh, yes, I did. Uh, it brought to my attention that the, um, the hack does not have a, like a wheelchair-accessible button on that side of the door where it opens the doors automatically. Um, I know we do on the front of this building. Um, I don't know if that's something that was, that we're planning on doing, or, um, or if one got put in there.
I was trying to think. I don't see one neither. It's something we truly need to make sure we have, that there's a, that door automatically opens for them.
I don't know if there's one for the library either, um, but the hack is, well, it's brought to my attention.
There's one at the library. My kid pushing, I yelled at him.
You have a child that pushes it?
Yeah.
Well, I know the seniors here have one.
One I forgot. Actually, chief, this is kinda for you, just a reminder for everybody out there, school starts Thursday. So we're gonna have kids all over the place, school zones are flashing. Uh, chief, do we have any kind of setup so that we can have extra people on in the mornings for the first couple of weeks of school, or maybe help remind people what those flashing yellow lights mean?
Yeah, we'll have the, the officers out doing that. And one of the other service also out there helping.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other council concerns, we'll be going to item B, Council Action Requests Updates.
All right, we already talked about three fifty-four, Turkle a little bit. Uh, the Public Works staff mowed that property behind Turkle, just north of the Cowskin Creek on August third. Um, some of the issues we have back there is the five lots just north of the Cowskin Creek have some trees and a lot of debris, let alone the slope of the hill right there. Um, we're kinda waiting for staff to finish the street maintenance program this year, and then they're gonna get back there with some equipment and see what we can do with actual mowing of the slope. Next, eight oh one, Sunflower, based on visual inspection on August eleventh, the homeowner has mowed everything, including along the fence line. Uh, the request is considered closed. An eight twenty-five, West Sunflower, our code enforcement officer was actually able to get in contact with the homeowner and get addressed, uh, so he's being notified of the current violations. Uh, this is one we've talked about before, where he's been mowing the property, not mowing all of it, so he's been notified of that. He has five days upon receiving letter.
Any of those, Kessler?
I just wanna mention, uh, the one on Turkle is, uh, one that one of the residents had, uh, contacted me about. I turned it in and, um, I believe I did talk to, uh, council board, um, at the following council meeting. That was it.
Okay, seeing nothing else, we're ready for item fourteen, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
She beat her.
Kessler?
Yes.
Canega?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.